Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Lebanon Planning Commission meeting on Monday, December 20th, 2021. We have first thing called a meeting to order, and then the next thing, roll call, please.
John Lastly?
Here.
Dan Beashore?
Absent.
Kevin Krulik?
Absent.
Jeremy Lawler?
Absent.
Keith Campbell?
Here.
Ashley Paddock?
Here.
Brian Tandy?
Here.
Ally Mullen?
Here.
Lori Gross?
Here.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve last month's minutes.
Make a motion that we approve last month's minutes.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Roll call, please.
John Lastly?
Yes.
Keith Campbell?
Yes.
Ashley Paddock?
Yes.
Brian Tandy?
Yes.
Ally Mullen?
Yes.
Lori Gross?
Yes.
Okay, the next order of business is approval of the meeting dates. Everyone get a copy of those.
Uh huh.
The first two meetings of every year is on the third Tuesday of each, January 18th and February's 22nd, and the rest of them are on the third Monday of each month. Okay? So, January the 18th will be the first meeting next year. Okay? All right. Yeah, we need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 2022 planning commission dates.
Okay, we have a motion.
John Lastly?
Yes.
Keith Campbell?
Yes.
Ashley Paddock?
Yes.
Brian Tandy?
Yes.
Ally Mullen?
Yes.
Lori Gross?
Yes.
The whole business, this item has been continued to the January meeting, so if you're here for the Beazier Homes LLP requesting initial zoning for a voluntary annexation of approximately 78.86 acres into the corporate city boundaries. The parcel is located on the northwest side of State Road 39 North and County Road 300 North, so it's been postponed till the next month. So, if you're here for that, it's not going to happen tonight. Okay? All right. New business, docket number 2160, Golden Eagle Lodging Management LLC requesting rezoning application for 1245 West State Road 32 from PBI Plan Business Industrial to Plan Business Commercial. Matt?
Good evening, Board. Thank you for letting me come here tonight, and then let me present these, a couple of these rezones that we have. You can have three rezones before you this evening, and as a reminder to you and to the several dozen in the room and the thousands watching at home on television, just wanted to review the process of a rezone. Tonight is the first step. We're going to be presenting to you the, the application of a rezone and the explanation of why the staff would support those rezones, then for you to determine a recommendation to council, whether favorable or unfavorable, and then from there, the council will decide whether to adopt that rezone or not. So, tonight, we're not deciding on any development plans or any businesses or any changes of use. This is simply a rezone of the parcel so that the property owner can do other projects with it. So, again, tonight, you'll have three of them, and again, that's the first step in the process, and just looking for a recommendation from you. The first one, the Golden Eagle Lodging Management, this is the O'Connell Lodge property located out on State Road 32 west of town. The parcel is currently zoned Plan Business Industrial, which is very similar to everything else out in that area. When they zoned for the business part, they kind of, we assumed they lump summed everybody together. This property is, many of you that have been around town know, has been a, serving as a hotel for decades. It's changed names, but it's currently the O'Connell Lodge, and the property owner is asking to change from Plan Business Industrial to Plan Business Commercial. What this change would do would allow a little more flexibility in the use of the property. If we could pull up the map here, I've got an aerial on the laptop. As you can see, the hotels here in the middle, State Road 32 or South Street along the north side, Garofalo Drive along the west, and Mount Zion Road on the east. Towards the rear of the property, there is some open space that could potentially be developed into another type of commercial use, and again, we'll let the applicant explain what they may or may not have in mind for the particular future of the development. But the change of zoning to Plan Business Commercial would allow more flexibility than the current Plan Business Industrial zoning classification. So, when we're reviewing these processes, there's a procedural process, and there's five criteria that we always have to go through, and we'll just walk through those kind of quickly, but touching on each of them. The first criteria is the consistency with the comprehensive plan. Lebanon's comprehensive plan is a guide that chooses to represent future land use within our community. The current subject property is zoned commercial use on the future land use map, so changing from an industrial zoning to a commercial zoning is consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. The second criteria is compatibility with adjacent uses. You guys are familiar with the area, and on the screen, you can see we've got other commercial uses both to the north, east, and south of this existing parcel, and then an industrial use directly west. So, the compatibility with adjacent uses is, the existing use is compatible with almost all of the surrounding properties. Criteria three is the desirability of the land use. The Plan Business Commercial is being proposed in order to provide a little flexibility or the ability for more diverse commercial use on the property. The proposed district would not be, would not only be compatible with the surrounding land uses, but would be a desirable land use given the existing pattern of development within the area. So, the staff finding is that Plan Business Commercial is a desirable land use. Criteria four is the impact on property values. As I've mentioned, it's existed as a commercial use for many decades. Changing the zoning to Plan Business Commercial would have no negative impact on the surrounding property values. And the fifth criteria is responsible growth. Excuse me, I, I mentioned it before, the change to Plan Business Commercial would allow flexibility to add or change other commercial uses with, on the property. Any physical changes to the property or any development plans would still need to come before you, so we're not giving them a free ticket to do whatever they want with a property that's simply allowing the flexibility to, to add or make changes without further staff review. So, the subject property being rezoned Plan Business Commercial does represent responsible growth and development. With all those five criteria said, planning staff does recommend that this petition be forwarded by the planning commission to the common council with a favorable recommendation. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions from the committee? Do you have any? Would the applicant come forward, please? If he'd like to speak? For the applicant, yeah.
Hello. So, I think you did a great job in explaining the site. To give some history, it was built in 1985, and it was a part of a larger parcel, 15 acres, that goes all the way back where the storage is. Back in 2003, when this was purchased, the owner split off the land for the hotel and sold the portion of the, the back portion of the, that's on the south of the Garofalo Boulevard where the storage is, to the Storage Express. And now, being at 2.6 acres, it doesn't make sense for it to be an industrial zoning anymore, being surrounded by restaurants, gas stations, strip malls, hotels. We believe that commercial use is the, the best route for this piece of land for us to do any kind of development in the back piece or front piece, so we are, we're still looking at the options, but zoning would be first thing we need to make sure it's clear before we pitch it to any developers or any investors and any, any other corporate customers or clients who can, who let us develop or build the suite kind of property. We're, we have submitted, reached out to some of the corporate clients, you know, Chipotle, Chick-fil-A, anybody who, who's, you know, who's looking to, willing to look at this site for their corporate, for their site selection process. But to be able to pitch, we've got to make sure that we have the right zoning in place and to be able to develop it to anything else. So, that's, you know, what we're seeking today is make it consistent with the, with being around for its size and let us work with, on the development, and we'll come back with any specific plans we might have.
Okay, thank you. Anyone on the members of the board have a question? Ben?
I'm just a minute.
Are you with the applicant? Are you with the applicant?
No, but I have someone else.
Okay, you're going to all have a public hearing in a minute. Okay. Any board members want to speak? No? Okay, well, then we'll have an open hearing for the public. If you'd like to give your name and address, come up forward to the microphone. You can go now.
I'm sure you tell them to sign in.
Yeah, you got to sign in when you leave.
He did.
He did, okay.
Hey, everyone. My name is Nick Johnny. I'm the owner. Here's my dad along with him. Well, you know, pretty grand as well. I came into Lebanon, the friendly city that it is today, as an entrepreneur, someone who graduated in 2018, as a young entrepreneur, making my parents' dream a reality, investing 1.5 million dollars into that subway that we own right by exit 140. As you can imagine, one week into it, 2020 occurred, one week later, COVID hit. I actually remember speaking with, you know, Kelly at the very beginning, when I was introducing , getting to know the leaders here in the small community that we have right here, right? And we love our customers. We love doing business, and we loved every single minute that we've had so far here in Lebanon. Now, what I see here is certainly, you know, an opportunity that one can take, but as we go about doing the development, the right kind of development, one that does not, you know, impact small business owners that truly live by the thin margins that we live by, and the sort of impact that this would potentially have on the local visibility and the advertisement. So, if you're on US 32, right now, we have the opportunity with that open land that you see a subway, you see the big billboard, and you see the gorgeous building, beautiful location, that customers have come to enjoy for years. Before me, it was Kelly, who was, you know, giving her heart out to operate that location and make that a success that it is today, and we want to continue to do that for many, many years. What we do today is not only make our customers happy, but also our team members. They rely on us being successful day in, day out, and we enjoy and love our team and helping them grow personally and professionally. This, as we know it, assuming that you do another retail development, which is exactly what the proposal is here, it's always been a motel right there. The 1.5 million dollar investment I made into that business was considering that there is no, their location that would have be a direct competition. This would, in essence, would not be a responsible growth, one that would, you know, not bring everybody together, but pick winners and losers, right? It would simply be an artificial trade that says, yep, here you go, you can have more retail stores, right? So, I would just say, you know, as we go about doing this planning, I'm always in support of, you know, nurturing the community, growing the community to the best level that it possibly can, but hopefully, it's one that captures every single small business owner particularly, not some big corporation, true small, small pop shop. So, that's what I wanted to bring to the table as we go about making this huge decision, which has a direct impact on my family, but also on the team members that are part of the team, right? So, we want to see growth, but hopefully, just, you know, so you have that awareness as you go about making that decision.
All right.
But in any case, love Lebanon, and, you know, no matter the outcome, we are going to continue to give 110% to making sure that we are part of the community in a positive way, and customers come to enjoy that location from many years ago. So, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. If anyone else would like to come forward and speak? Seeing no one else, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, now, we, I will entertain a motion from the docket 2160 to be Plan Business Commercial, changing it from Plan Business Industrial. Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for docket 2160, the rezoning request for Plan Business Commercial. I recommend to forward this to the common council with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, we need the second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Roll call, please.
John Lastly?
Yeah.
Keith Campbell?
Yes.
Ashley Paddock?
Yes.
Brian Tandy?
Yes.
Ally Mullen?
Yes.
Lori Gross?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passed. Okay, next item, docket number 21-62, Philip Cassion requesting rezoning from SF2 Single Family 2 to Plan Business Commercial. The property is located at 129 West Camp Street. Matt?
Good evening again. This will be a very similar discussion in that we have an existing property that is located on North Lebanon Street, the intersection of Camp and Lebanon, right next to Memorial Park. Currently, and has been, being used by Dr. Cassion as a dental office and other professional services. A little history on the property, in 1988, Dr. and Mrs. Cassion were, provided a use variance that was sent with a favorable recommendation from the planning commission to the BZA, and the BZA later that month approved that use variance for professional services within a residential zoned parcel. So, what we're doing tonight is, the applicant is requesting a rezone from single-family residential to, to Plan Business Commercial. Again, very similar to the last application in that this will allow the flexibility of the use in the future, but would also bring a, it's not a non-conforming use because it does have a use variance applied to it, but they wouldn't have to keep coming back anytime a new business would enter onto that property or that use would change. The Plan Business Commercial would allow that flexibility and adaptability for that particular building. So, going through the five criteria again, the consistency with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan, as I've mentioned, is used as a guide and represents desired land use. It's not always required to follow the comprehensive plan, and what we're doing here, the comprehensive plan designates it as residential, but as a property that's been used as a commercial use for well over three decades, just aligning the zoning with what historically has been used there is, and allowing the existing use to continue is preferable. So, the subject rezoning property to Plan Business Commercial is consistent with objectives of the comprehensive plan in that we want to have conforming properties and uses that are available to the existing property. Compatibility with adjacent uses, as I mentioned, if we pull it up on the screen here, we do have Memorial Park to the north, Walgreens and other professional offices to the west, and then some residential to the east and south. The institutional use across the street with the park, single-family residential on the, as I mentioned, to the east and the south, and Walgreens across the road on State Road 39. Rezoning to Plan Business Commercial is compatible with the existing uses and the, and some of the adjacent properties with that. Criteria three, the desirability of the land use, Plan Business Commercial that's being proposed in order to provide that property with the conformity that we're looking for in, in most of our zoning districts. The zoning district would not only be compatible with other land uses, but would be desirable considering the given existing pattern of development in that area and along State Road 39. So, staff does find that it is a desirable land use within the proposed area. The impact on property values, as I mentioned several times, for the last three decades, this has been used as professional offices, so the rezone to Plan Business Commercial would have no negative impact on the surrounding property values in the area. And then the last criteria of responsible growth, you know, the existing commercial use, bring it into a conforming status. Any changes, again, as I mentioned in the last one, any major changes of use or changes to the property would require a development plan, which would come back before you for your approval. So, again, tonight, we're not approving any development plan or anything of that nature. We're simply examining the, the rezone of the property from one zoning class to another. So, the subject rezoning to Plan Business Commercial does represent responsible growth and development within our community. With that, planning staff does recommend that the Lebanon Planning Commission forward to the common council this rezone with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Matt, can that ever go back to an SF2? If, I mean, if it's chosen later on to go back?
Yeah, I believe a rezone would be possible, yes.
So, if it's, if it ends up being zoned, the PBC, then we could, at one point, go back and, and put it back to an SF2 if we, if someone else bought it and they wanted to go back to housing?
Sure, yes.
Okay, any other questions? Okay?
Along those same, along those same lines, if we do make a PBC and someone comes in and proposes something but has no variances, it will likely pass through, correct?
Yes, any development plan that would be submitted that meets the criteria for Plan Business Commercial would still come before you, any development plan, you would still have to approve, but if there's no variances, if it meets the, the letter of the law per se, then yes, it's something that probably would be approved, or again, it would be up to you as a council or as a commission to decide whether to approve that or not.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, would the applicant like to come forward and maybe have a talk?
Any questions?
I think you did a great job in discussing the history of that, but I'd like to add a few things. As you said, for the last three decades, it has been business. Prior to that, I understand it also was a medical office in combination, Dr. Coats, I believe. I'm sorry, not Dr. Coats, one of the surgeons at the hospital used it as one of his outpatient surgery centers. But since 1997, it has been strictly business. There's been no residential usage of that building since 1997. We've had three different businesses continuously in that building, everything from an odontologist to oral surgeons to orthodontists to, there's presently a CPA there, recently, a insurance broker recently, will no longer be there, but we've had two, three different insurance brokers in that building. I don't believe that property would ever go back to residential, being the amount of traffic that's along that street. I would find that unusual to go back to that. The, the, one of the reasons I've come in front of you now is because I've also been approached by a, two, two young ladies who would like to place their beauty parlor there. So, at the present time, I don't think that meets the criteria for professional, professional office center, so it would have to be rezoned to the classification that we request, we requested, so that they would be able to function there. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, anyone on the board have a question? Okay, guess not. Okay, thank you. I will now open up the public hearing. Same thing, make sure you give your name and address, and also be sure you sign the form over there if you'd like to speak. Anyone like to come forward? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, we will entertain, I will entertain a motion for docket number 21-62.
I'd motion to boot docket 21-62 to the common council with a favorable recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
John Lastly?
Yes.
Keith Campbell?
Yes.
Ashley Paddock?
Yes.
Brian Tandy?
Yes.
Ally Mullen?
Yes.
Lori Gross? Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the docket is docket number 21-63, it's Casey's General Store Incorporated requesting development plan approval to construct a new convenience store and gas station to be located at 1415 West South Street, the property is in Plan Business Commercial, and then the thoroughfare overlay district. Okay, Ben?
Evening, commission members. I'll give a brief overview of the project here, and then the applicants here also to fill in any gaps that I may, I may leave behind. This is lot five in the Lebanon Gateway Marketplace project that's out on State Road 32, just a little bit east of Interstate 65. This is a plan unit development zoning district, and it's also an thoroughfare overlay district. The fueling station use that's being proposed here is a permitted use within the PUD district that's established for this site. So, what we're reviewing here is for compliance with both the underlying zoning district, the Plan Business Commercial zoning district, and then also any standards that were applied via the PUD ordinance. So, that's what we've done here tonight, and again, just a quick history here, Gateway Marketplace, the PUD rezone was considered by the planning commission in May of 2018, and then the ordinance adopted by the county council in June 2018, and then we did make a few modifications to the PUD ordinance that were adopted by the council on May of 2021 of this year. So, those, that's what we'll be reviewing here. If they want to bring the screen up, I'll kind of run through the site, just real quickly on the site plan. This is, you see here, State Road 32 is on the north, this, this is Ping that you see kind of wrapping around it on the west side, and then Ransdale Road on the east side here. So, it does have road frontages on all sides of this property, so there are some limitations in terms of setbacks and things like that that we had to work through with the applicant to make sure both the building and the canopy for the fueling pumps could meet all of the appropriate front setback standards. As you can see here, you've got about a 4,200 square foot convenience store that's located here about in the middle of the property, and then you've got a five pump island that you see out here in the front that all meet the appropriate setbacks. There is one access point on Ping that matches up with the proposed access point to the property to the west, that's actually under construction right now, and then two additional cuts that you see here on Ransdale Road on the east side. There is parking associated with, certainly with the island, but then also parking in the front of the building, and then a little bit of parking to the side and rear of the building as well. They have met all of our parking requirements. The dumpster is located and the required enclosure to the rear of the building that you see here. So, that's, that's a quick overview of the site plan. Like I said, they do meet the parking standards, there are 29 spaces required and 29 provided, which would be 28 standard spaces and 180A space. They have provided the required bike rack to the northeast corner of the building here, and the appropriate pedestrian access out to the sidewalk along Ping Avenue that you see here to the west. In terms of lighting, you're not going to be able to read any of the numbers on this, on this plan here, but this is a, this is, these are all the foot candle measurements for the site, and we did have to make some modifications to make sure that it met all those, the, the foot candle measurements of the property lines, but I can assure you that they have met all those requirements and meet all of our standards for lighting intensity. square footage based on the linear frontage of the building. So those, those do all count, and those, and they do meet all those, those square footage requirements. And then they also, in addition, will have a sign in the Gateway Marketplace monument sign that's out front of the development. In terms of the architecture, again, we have very specific thoroughfare overlay architecture standards and also standards of PUD ordinance, and they, they do meet all those requirements. You can see here, you've got a building that is primarily brick and then also with some stone at each one of the corners. This is the front of the building. You can see they have the windows and entrance to the store, as you can see, and then we did work with them to provide some additional, I believe, their false windows on both the east and west sides where they'll be primarily visible from Ping and Ransdale, just to add some additional architectural elements to the sides of the building. The back, as you can see, is primarily just a rear entrance, service entrance, and also some of the utilities. And kind of going back to the landscape plan, if you recall, there was quite a bit of landscaping in that yard area that's going to do a good job of screening some of those utility areas. They did also have to add this element to the tops of the building for the roof-mounted HVAC to make sure that the HVAC equipment on the roof of the building was also screened appropriately, as you can see here from both the front and rear of the building. That's a quick overview, and you did, I don't think I have a canopy in here, but the canopy does also mimic the, kind of the red trim on the top, and then they also have all 100% brick columns. So they have met all the architectural requirements. And so that kind of is a quick summary of all the standards that apply to this site and how they've met them. And so finally, the staff recommendation, review of the submitted development plan. We find compliance with the UDO requirements for the subject site, and we recommend approval of the subject development plan contingent on the following conditions, and I believe they've actually addressed most of the TAC comments already, but we do always, we always put this in here, that they adequately address any remaining TAC comments if there are any prior to application for any building permits or site improvements. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions from the board, Ben? Okay, hearing none. Okay. Would the applicant like to come forward?
Hey, good evening. My name is Rob Sweet. I'm with McBride Dale Clarion, address 5725 Dragon Way, Suite 300, Cincinnati, Ohio 45227. Here tonight with Connor Stragi. He's our civil engineer with Kimberly Horn. And just, first and foremost, just want to thank staff for working with us, not only Ben and his team, but also Kevin and all the other city departments that we worked with. It's taken us a long time to get here, but we're here. Hopefully, this is a good project. Couple of things, I don't think I can really add too much more to what we, to what Ben just went over. Let me bring up a picture up here. Okay. See if we can bring up a couple of just quick elevations, kind of show you what we're looking with. Let's see here, let's do this. There we go. So this is our landscape plan that we have here. As you can see, kind of right in the middle, there's our building. We do have, you know, all the required plantings around the front and along the sides and to the rear. One thing to add to this, we did provide a sidewalk along Ransdale that runs all the way down Ransdale, and then on that little connector piece out to Ping. We do have our dumpster enclosure in the rear that, that does provide some additional screening for that structure. We did that screen, the structure screening is the same material as what we're using on the building. Couple other items, we do have, provide the pedestrian connection. One other item to kind of keep in mind as you're looking at this plan, up at the top there, Long 32, there is a gas line easement, and so we've adjusted our site to stay out of that, stay out of that area, stay out of those plantings and whatnot. In regards to the signage, let me kind of flip over to something here. There's a picture of our building, which I think Ben's shown. There's a picture of example of our canopy that we intend to install. Obviously, it's not exact, and unfortunately, you would think Casey's would have an example that shows five exact dispensers, but we have one that shows three, and we got one that shows six. Don't ask. I, I fought with them, and this is what I got. So our canopy will look very similar to this. It's not going to be as big. It's going to be five, five fueling, or 10, five double-sided dispensers, 10 fueling positions instead of six that you see on your screen. In regards to signage, you know, we, this lot is a little unique. It's part of that marketplace. This lot is not permitted to have its own freestanding sign. Therefore, we are adding the panel to the existing overall center, and that's why we're using those digital price panels to show the price of fuel as you're coming down the street. With that being said, you know, we respectfully request approval of it. Connor is here to answer questions that may come up with any grading or engineering issues. I don't intend to be an engineer. I'm a planner by nature. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions that y'all may have. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for your time. Any board members have anything to say or questions to ask?
Just out of curiosity, is the Casey's that is there on Indianapolis Avenue, is this the same Casey's? Is it a different Casey's?
Not real familiar with that one. This is a new prototype. So this is a, it's a new style building. One that I saw earlier today had kind of the little frames on the canopy that kind of trued out. This will have a flat canopy, so we're not going to have those little house frames as you see on other sides. This does have their new marketing, their new logo packages on there.
So it's a totally different owner, totally different?
Same owners, Casey's.
Oh, same owner, okay.
Casey's is going to own it. They're going to own it, they're going to operate it. You know, but it, it is their newer prototype, newer style.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll open it up, public hearing. Anyone have a question or they'd like to speak? Not seeing anyone moving. We'll close the public hearing, and then we'll have to entertain a motion for Mr. Casey's there.
I'll make a motion to approve the subject development plan contingent on the following conditions. The applicant adequately addresses any remaining City of Lebanon technical advisory committee comments prior to application for any building permits or site improvements.
I'll second.
All right. Let the young lady go.
Ashley seconded.
I think she was first.
I think Ashley, I think Ashley beat me just a little bit.
Rock, paper, scissors, John.
Hey, I can't, I can't fight it, it's too far.
Okay. Would you call the roll, please?
John Lasley?
Yes.
Keith Campbell?
Yes.
Ashley Paddock?
Yes.
Brian Tandy?
Yes.
Ally Mullen?
Yes.
Lori Gross?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, and we'll move on to the next item. Okay, thank you. Next item is docket 21-65, ME Rental Properties LLC requesting zonal from ID Industrial District to Traditional Residential. The vacant lots are located at 702, 710, 714, and 719 West Superior Street. Ben?
All right, so a little bit of history here. Some of you may recall, probably a couple of years ago, this site came before you for a use variance to allow residential use here, and then the applicant kind of worked his way, excuse me, through some of the development details, and it became to the point where it was, it wasn't financially feasible, so he's walked away. So the site's been available for sale since that time. We do now have a new applicant, a new owner to the property who's purchased this over the last couple of months, and is looking to develop this with residential uses. We worked with them to figure out whether it made more sense to try to go through the use variance process again, which is, which is not necessarily a permanent change, or to go through a rezone and what would be the most appropriate zoning classification for that. And we made the determination and communicating with the applicant that it made more sense to go ahead and do the rezone now, go ahead and make a permanent change there that would allow them to move forward then with their development plan application for the residential uses they're proposing here. So that's what we've done here tonight, is they, we worked with the applicant, and then, again, trying to, again, historically, this has been zoned general industrial. This is kind of an interesting area where there's a large area that's zoned general industrial, but it's a mix as you go further west of industrial uses in this area. It's actually primarily residential uses, but all of them are zoned general industrial, so they're non-conforming right now. So in this case, we're looking to rezone this block to allow it to be residential uses more appropriate, given what's directly surrounding. If they want to bring up the, the site map here, you can kind of see, again, just as I talked about, excuse me, to the west here, you'll see industrial uses zoned in general industrial. To the south here, just off the map to the site, there actually are some self-storage facilities that are zoned general industrial, and then primarily the rest of the perimeter of the site is all residential uses. Again, they're all zoned general industrial, but you do, from a use perspective, you do kind of have a mix of industrial and residential uses in this area. So what we did was work with them and decided that it made more sense to rezone it to a residential zoning classification, then kind of looking at the area. This is that, we actually recommended rezoning it to the traditional residential zoning classification. This is one that's been in our zoning ordinance for a long time, but it actually doesn't exist on the zoning map anywhere currently. But this is actually one where you look at kind of our old historic downtown and the size of the lots, and actually the way it's developed, the traditional residential lot size requirements and the setback requirements more closely aligned with our urban downtown core. So we actually think over time that it makes more sense to actually transition some of these other areas to that traditional residential zoning classification to align them more with, with what's actually happening on the ground. So that's what we've worked with them, is to look at that zoning classification being the most appropriate. The traditional residential zoning classification does allow a variety of residential uses. It can be single-family, duplexes, multifamily. Certainly, there are limitations to the size of site what could actually be developed here, but it does allow all residential uses in that zoning classification. And so that's what the applicant is looking to see, what's most appropriate to develop that site from a residential perspective, but it is residential uses that they're proposing. Again, walking through those five criteria like Matt did on the two that he talked about with you, consistency with the comprehensive plan. This is an area on our comprehensive plan that's actually designated for mixed-density residential uses on the future land use map. I'll get rid of that eventually. All right, try that again. Mixed-density residential on the future land use map with a comprehensive plan, and so it allows for a variety of single and multifamily development options. And that's what the comprehensive plan suggests for future land use, and we find then that rezoning to traditional residential would be consistent then with the goals, policies, and objectives of the comprehensive plan, based on what I just suggested. In terms of compatibility with existing or adjacent, existing and adjacent land uses, as you can see, all of the zoning around the property is general industrial, but we have a wide variety of uses. So while it's all zoned industrial, we have some single-family residential, and we have some industrial uses around its perimeter. So the subject rezoning to traditional residential would be compatible with existing uses and zoning on adjacent properties, given the fact that there are quite a bit of residential uses in the area. The desirability of the land use, the rezone is being, is being proposed in order to allow existing lots that were originally platted for residential uses to be used for the most appropriate use, residential use. So the proposed zoning just in use would not only be compatible with the surrounding lanes, but would be a desirable land use given the existing pattern of development. As you can see here on the map, you can see these are platted residential lots while it's zoned general industrial. This, it wasn't, it appears it was never intended to be industrial uses, and the site really isn't very appropriate for a general industrial land use, which requires a much larger lot sizes and much larger setbacks than what would even be able to occur here. We have had somebody look at this for an industrial use, which would be a permitted use, but then finding how to figure out how to get it to fit, get all the detention requirements in, and all the, all the site designs that we required, it would have taken a number of variances to just work out. So we really feel like from a future land use perspective, a residential use makes a lot more sense. So the subject rezoning to traditional residential is a desirable land use within the proposed area. Criteria number four, impact on property values. Many immediate areas I suggested previously contains a variety of both residential and non-residential land uses. However, the current zoning allows for industrial land uses, which have a much more significant impact on adjacent residential property values than those uses permitted in the traditional residential zoning district. So the proposed rezone would more closely align with the adjacent residential uses. Given that fact, we find that the subject rezoning would have no negative impact on property values. Criteria number five, responsible growth. The rezone to traditional residential will allow for the development of a desirable land use on the subject residential lots. The area is served by existing utilities, and any impacts to adjacent roadways will be addressed at the time of development, and we find that the subject rezoning to traditional residential would represent responsible growth and development. And with that, Lebanon Planning Staff recommends this petition be forwarded by the Plan Commission to the common council with a favorable recommendation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions from members of the board? Okay, not hearing any, but the applicant come forward, please?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Chris Badger with Badger Engineering. I'm located at 990 West Oak Street in Zeinsville, Indiana. Go Boilers! If you have to bring up the sign again, or the property? We do have a couple of things that we'll be doing. Also, on the north side of the property, you'll see there's a vacation that will occur of an alley, and then there's also, you can see in the middle between the lots, also shows an old platted street. There is one interesting thing we're working with Ben on. On the south side of the property, the old inner urban had a right-of-way, and, and it goes through there, and we're looking at being able to make that taxable ground and, and get that from the city, and then be able to put some parking in there for the new residents. So we hope to see you again soon with the new development plan, and we look forward to having your vote on the rezone. Thank you.
Okay. Any, okay, any other questions from the board to the applicant? The other question I have is, when you say it's individual homes, or is it going to be rentals?
It looks like right now it's going to be rentals. They have to look at the pro forma, but at this point, it looks like rentals.
Okay. Okay. Anyone who'd like to speak? Now I'll open it up to the public hearing. Be sure you give your name and address, and you have three minutes. Okay? Thank you.
If you could put that back on the screen, the property map. My name is Brian Spanhook. I live at 701 West Pearl Street and have for the past 16 years. This property is directly behind my home, and I have a few questions regarding rezoning, traffic, and safety for children.
Could you speak closer to the mic a little bit and speak up? Thank you.
Do you want me to start back over?
No, you're fine. Go ahead.
As the heart of Lebanon grows and beats, I just want to take a little time to take care of our little piece of Lebanon so it doesn't get overlooked. We need a little bit of infrastructure help in our area, as it is one of the oldest areas in Lebanon. A few of my concerns is, does this rezone the whole block, or is it just rezoning those four lots? If so, is traditional residential mean homes and not condos or apartment buildings? Because this is a residential, as in homes, not, we've got enough apartments going up. They just, they're doing another thing at the end of the road, that big L building you guys just started on, and that is literally, our road is going to go into that and tee into it, so all of that traffic is going to go up and down of our street, and there is no stop signs whatsoever. And we have a lot of children in this area, and that is a lot of cars. And then you're wanting to add more apartments apparently behind my home, which is going to bring a lot of traffic. If they build here, can the city please put a storm drain? My home is the one, I can't, I wish I had a thing I could put on there, but the top right corner is my, where my home is, and that little bottom area right there floods whenever it rains, and there is no storm drain for that area. So, and it's probably a good foot deeper than the rest of those three lots. I feel it will only get worse if they start building on that, and all that water is going to shed onto my property because there's no storm drains. What about the vacated alleys? From my understanding, there is a sewer line that runs north and south from the 711 West Pearl Street through the said property and to Superior Street through that alley.
care of our little piece of Lebanon, so it doesn't get overlooked. We need a little bit of infrastructure help in our area, as it is one of the oldest areas in Lebanon. A few of my concerns is, does this rezone the whole block, or is it just rezoning those four lots? If so, is traditional residential mean homes and not condos or apartment buildings? Because this is a residential, as in homes, not, we've got enough apartments going up. They just, they're doing another thing at the end of the road, that big L building you guys just started on. And that is literally, our road is going to go into that and tee into it. So all of that traffic is going to go up and down of our street, and there is no stop signs whatsoever. And we have a lot of children in this area, and that is a lot of cars. And then you're wanting to add more apartments apparently behind my home, which is going to bring a lot of traffic. If they build here, can the city please put a storm drain? My home is the one, I can't, I wish I had a thing I could put on there, but the top right corner is my, where my home is. And that little bottom area right there floods whenever it rains. And there is no storm drain for that area. So, and it's probably a good foot deeper than the rest of those three lots. I feel it will only get worse if they start building on that, and all that water is going to shed onto my property because there's no storm drains. What about the vacated alleys? From my understanding, there is a sewer line that runs north and south from the 711 West Pearl Street through the said property and to Superior Street through that alley that's going up and down. Is that going to unvacate alleys in this area? And is Superior Street going to be widened to a two-lane street instead of a one-lane road, where there was train tracks for 100 years? It's only a one-lane road right there, so it really can't handle much traffic through there. As a safety concern on the traffic, can we please put in stop signs in the neighborhood? Because there is no stop signs anywhere on that whole entire block, except for the one going, going north on Ryan Street to go across Pearl. And with that, I thought when I got up here that this was going to be traditional residential, and I was really in tune with homes, because it's a neighborhood. We don't want apartments. We've got enough people here in our neighborhood that don't want more apartments, especially multifamily, because he just said that he was going to put a whole bunch of apartments across Superior Street. So that's kind of where we're at with it. But thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak? I don't see anyone else who'd like to speak. Would the applicant like to come forward, please? We'll close the public hearing, okay? Thank you.
Excellent comments. First of all, we already knew that there was a drainage problem. And actually, it's going to go down that easement to the north corner and west corner, and it's going to go, continue that direction. So we're going to have to repair all of that. Any of the water that we create, we're going to hold on to dried attention. And then, in terms of Superior, absolutely, we're going to build up Superior and have parking with some islands, similar to the landscape plan you saw earlier. But you'd have an island, and they would go up to people's houses. So you'd have places for people to park. As we all know, that most subdivisions and most homes right now, people park in the driveway. So we wanted to make a kind of a driveway there, along with that property. It would be, it would make that property a little bit bigger. And then, we also knew about the sanitary. We'd find that line, and we've got to put our own sanitary line in a main with manhole. And so we'll be able to pick up all of that sanitary waste and put it into a new facility. So we're looking forward to working with them, keeping some setbacks, adding some landscaping, handling the drainage, and handling the traffic. I don't think it'd be a problem to add the stop signs either. Anything that's adjacent to our development, we'll look at the stop sign and signage. So if there's any other questions.
This question may be more for Ben. Am I correct that there is like an alley that is in between the two properties? And does that alley go all the way north between the Clues and the Crawford property?
Those alleys don't exist anymore.
They're non-existent?
At some point, historically, they were public alleys, but those have been, were vacated at some point. So that's why you kind of see here on the map how they're kind of split in two. That's showing that they had been vacated and split to the adjacent.
And that's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure, because I thought he said something about they were going to do something with the middle of that, and I thought he was talking about alleys.
Yeah. So the property owners suggest that there's a sanitary lateral that comes, that comes down through that, that old alley right-of-way. So we've already talked to the applicant about needing to pick that up and get it into the sanitary sewer.
Okay, okay. That's what it was. Okay.
I think the one question they had is, this rezone is just for those four lots?
Yes, yes. This rezone just impacts these four lots here. This would not rezone anything that the applicant hasn't requested. So it's just specifically for these four lots that the applicant requested. Couple of other things, just kind of elaborating on what the applicant suggests, that certainly, this is going to have to come back through a development plan review at the point when they decide exactly how to develop the site. So we're going to go through, and it has to meet all of our drainage requirements of our drainage ordinance. They have to pick up all the site drain, stormwater, collect it all in the dried attention, as the applicant suggested. And we are aware that there is an issue with there's a storm sewer manhole up here on Ryan Street that's just northeast of the site. And I think it's partially collapsed. We've looked at it once before. That's all going to have to be repaired, and then I believe it's going to have to run down through this, this alley right-of-way here to another storm manhole that's down in the next block. So that's all going to be addressed at the time of development plan application.
Ben, can you touch just a little bit the difference between TR and let's say something comparable like SF2, on what could be allowed there?
So the primary difference as you go through SF1, SF2, SF3 to traditional residential is the lot size and setback requirements change. But on the, from the use perspective, SF1 and SF2 are primary single-family. SF3 then gets into single-family and duplex and some of those that are slightly more dense uses. And then traditional residential just gets a little bit more flexibility in terms of the use, and would allow single-family, duplex, and then multifamily. Now, given the size of the site, there are still lot size requirements even for multifamily. So it's not like you're going to see like a three-story building here with like 40 units in it. It just would, the zoning wouldn't allow it. So I don't know exactly what they're planning. I know they're looking at a couple different product types, but certainly there are still restrictions on that zoning district, how many units could be here. So you're not going to see a ton of units here.
Okay, thank you.
Ben, if I'm correct, they still have to come back to us again even after they get to development plans, right?
Yeah, they'll, they'll have to be a development plan. So we'll be reviewing again of how they're going to design the site, how the building's going to be laid out, improvements that they're going to need to do to Superior Street to make sure that that's a two-way street and also accommodate their parking. So all those will still be reviewed and come back to the Plan Commission at later date. This is, this is strictly a rezoning of the, you know, the zoning district for the site. So this is not approving any specific use or development they're proposing. This is just aligning the use more appropriately with what the site can be.
So we're just, we're just changing the zoning this evening, right?
Just changing the zoning this evening. This is not a blanket approval to do what they want. This still has to come back through and go through all the appropriate development review.
Call the roll. We need a motion to, on this 21-65. You have a motion?
I'll make a motion, docket number 2165, to send the zoning change request to transitional housing?
Traditional.
Traditional.
Traditional residential.
Traditional residential. My computer went down. To the council with a favorable recommendation.
Okay. We have a second.
Are there other concerns or questions we need to address? I haven't heard from any of you yet. Are there other concerns we haven't addressed?
I know it's still being developed, but hypothetically, how many units are you hoping to put, what would be the maximum?
It's going to, it's going to be, it's going to be based on the zoning district. There's a certain square footage requirement based on each unit.
Right.
Exactly right. As you, as you work it out, you lose one for this reason, and you start looking at, you lose one for this reason. So probably going to end up being 12. Four buildings and three of these, like that.
He needs to come to the microphone.
Right now, it sounds like they're proposing four buildings, each with three units in it.
So a building per lot, basically.
So the other gentleman, that's why I wanted you to clarify, because the other gentleman that spoke had a concern about that. Just to talk about the difference between TR and SF.
Yes.
My concern would be to put multiple lots back there in single-family homes. I don't know if any of the other single-family looking homes have multiple units in them back there.
I don't know. I know there are rentals in the area. And there probably are some that are multiple units. I don't know for a fact where they are or anything like that. So, but there are primarily single-family structures in the area.
Right. Okay, we have a second on the table. Do we have anyone to make a second? I'm looking for a second.
How long do we have to wait? Reasonable time?
I guess the motion fails for no second. Okay. Do you need another motion? Anybody like to make another one?
So I would say at this point, you can either table it, and again, give me some direction on what we can do to answer further questions, or the other option is to send it with an unfavorable recommendation to council.
My motion to probably table is to understand the amount of units and how will it affect the area.
Okay, we have a motion to table.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion to table, and we have a second. Call the roll, please.
John Lastly?
Aye.
Keith Campbell?
Aye.
Ashley Paddock?
Yes.
Brian Tandy?
Yes.
Allee Mullen?
Yes.
Lori Gross?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, that pretty much fills out our agenda for this evening. The other thing is, the next, the next meeting will be on Tuesday, January 18th, no, 18th. Fourth is for number one. Got the wrong date. Okay. So that's our next meeting. I would adjourn for adjournments. Have a motion to adjourn?
Just a heads up, at the next meeting, we'll do election of officers for 2022. So if anybody has any interest or volunteer, just let me know.
Have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, a second?
I'll second.
In a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Unanimous. Thank you. Have a good C, January 18th.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to everyone.